City Commission Study Session. Start with public comments, do we have any public comments?
We've not registered today?
Oh, we don't. Moves us on to items to be placed on the regular City Commission Agenda. That would be the minutes from our March 2 regular meeting, March 7 Study Session, March 14 Study Session, and the March 16 regular meeting. Commissioners, are you okay with moving that on to the regular agenda?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That will move us on to items for presentation and discussion. We're going to have our interviews for our open seat for the City Commission to fill Tom Wagon's spot. Commissioners, just a few things before we start, just so we're all clear on kind of what we're expecting here. I think everybody got the folder with some questions already in there. For your sake, you can certainly, you know, take down some notes and how you feel about how each candidate answers the questions. I believe we'll just do kind of a round robin kind of questionnaire. That way, we can kind of stay on track instead of staring at each other figuring out who's going to ask the next question. Our first interview will be with Richard Jackson. Richard, you want to come on up?
Will you shut the door?
Thank you. Richard, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good, good. Richard, welcome. Thank you for calling, coming in today. Appreciate your willingness to put your name on the candidacy list. We're going to start off with, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you'd like to fill the position, anything else you think would be pertinent for us to hear.
This is, this is why I came out here initially, go to Ottawa, Ottawa University. You need to kind of grow on me somewhat, I never got back, back east, so this is, this is home. I did have about 12 years on the, on the City Commission and enjoyed that and something I like to do again. I'm retired, I've got too much time on my hands, I need, I need something to do. What better way than serving, serving the community? I didn't file, initially I had some minor surgery and really got some feeling up to it, and then when I decided I would, I missed it by a week. So, if you have a question why I didn't file the last time, that's, I did pass out a sheet here that you, that you had, I was thinking of some, some things about the city and some that you're, that you're working on and some that I've had experience with and maybe some that you hadn't, you hadn't thought of.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kayla, you want to start?
Yes, um, thank you, Richard, for being here, appreciate it. Can you describe, and I think you do talk about this a little bit in the document that you have provided for us, how you currently perceive the community of Ottawa?
Well, I pretty much laid it out. I guess number one is, is the be housing, the need for, the need for adequate housing. There's a need for two bedrooms starter and those that are retiring, low to moderate income that are affordable and homes under $200,000. Apartments are, are nice, I think some people think they have a negative, a negative trend. They think it increases crime in my experience in the past, being on the City Commission, looking at the case report, that doesn't really bear that, really bear that out. So I think a lot of times you deal with not, I, not in my backyard. I've had experience with a number of housing programs. I've always been of the opinion that you don't have to reinvent the wheel, there's other people out there that have, that have done what you're trying to do. I've worked very closely in past years with City Emporia, which is trying to do some of the same things that you're doing here. And one of the things they did was take a study and asked if there was adequate housing, how many of you live here, so you had Americas and also surrounding areas, and so they approached it from that standpoint. And of course, they have the House of Illinois Sag, the apartments yard, where you start per fire, whatever, that, that was a joint project between EK and the city, and then to build houses. If you get a nonprofit partner involved in a project like that, they get extra, extra points, there's federal money, state money, of course, housing is top on the state agenda. So I see housing as a, as a big need, and I know, second one I had listed there was solar, solar energy and as utility costs continue to rise, and they will continue to rise, and that has a major, major impact on those that live here, and major impact on businesses and those in the industrial, industrial park. Swimming pool, I know you talked about that in the past, some point in time you say it's going to have to do something with the swimming pool, I think, pass that about as much as you can, that you can patch it, it's well, it's outlived its uselessness. What else did I have? And a number of different things I had, I had listed there rather than being good stewards of, of public funds, I think I mentioned earlier potholes, and certainly that is an issue. I believe you have a, a street repair program with your major streets, you probably need to look at the residential streets and those sun drive, to drive through the community, and some of those are pretty bad, and I don't think we can neglect those, as far as taxpayers are, are concerned. Promoting the community, I guess any way that you can find to promote Ottawa, I think the commission has to have a positive appreciation for the community, or wherever you go, I know it as on the commission before, we get a lot of different meetings and things, and people talk about how great Ottawa was and the things that it tried to accomplish, but they seem to be more positive than the citizens that actually live here. The other thing I would, the city has been involved in typically the last five years with the WE program at Ottawa University, where we're working on diversity, inclusiveness, we have a sign on the north side, we need a sign on the south side, and then we really need to mean it, we need to do whatever we can to promote that, if we're saying we're an inclusive community, let's, let's be inclusive. And I know the, some of the city staff, which took the fire police department to attend the WE conferences, I'd like to see more people find ways to get school board and county commissioners also be involved in that endeavor.
Commissioner Graves?
If you don't mind, I'll skip to number two, I believe that answered that one, is the, some of the challenges, but what are some opportunities you see for the future of Ottawa?
Housing growth. Community hasn't, hasn't grown much in years, I think when I came here, it was 12,500 and maybe it's 1,300, I'm not sure. If I remember correctly, at the last league journal they put out a couple of those that showed that Ottawa is one of those communities that hasn't grown, city, the county has grown, but the city hasn't. You said challenges, jobs, bringing in jobs that people can handle, people can actually do, this is not a high tech, not a high tech community, so it wouldn't make sense to try to do that. I think you have those challenges with proximity park, even warehouses, trying to find that, find that, make sure we bring in jobs that people here can, can make a living in, grow the community.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Let me go back to the housing, what years were you on the commission here, Richard? Refresh my memory.
I don't know, well, 92?
Okay.
92, 2005, 2007.
Okay. I recall, did they have a neighborhood revitalization program going on, the neighborhood revitalization?
Neighborhood revitalization program was going on.
What's your thoughts on that? Just getting back on the topic.
That is worth, worthwhile, I think that's, you know, a small piece of it, I think the city has just tried to utilize that as much as they, as they can. I think sometimes the city, city doesn't give itself enough credit, or it does it throughout, it doesn't give itself enough, enough credit, because I think there's a lot of things, you mentioned revitalization program, and there's other programs that the city is, is operating, but we don't tell the public. And a lot of, and a lot of what cities do is you don't, you don't see when they have the sidewalk program, that's something you can, you can see, but a lot of things you don't, you don't, you don't see.
Let me go ahead and do a question for that, just kind of an extra question. What, what talent or skill set would you bring to the City Commission?
Well, I'm a, I'm a hard, I'm a hard worker, I, I don't give up easily, I believe standing up for what I'm right, but I can also see both sides of the, both sides of the picture, and I think you have to be able to do that, you don't agree on everything, and you, you work within the commission, you don't take things personally. I like to take the step there and go to meetings and things where I can pick up things that you can bring back to the, bring back to the community.
Richard, when Commissioner Graves asked you about the opportunities that you see for the future of Ottawa, you mentioned growth, but then you, you kind of backed up a little bit and you said that we hadn't had much growth, what do you think's holding the city back from that growth?
Well, obviously, number one is housing. We've been behind the eight ball on housing for years, I can remember before I came on the commission, when Wolf Creek was being built, there was a lack of housing here, people moved elsewhere, then Walmart DC started to locate here, there wasn't access to housing, so people moved, moved elsewhere. On the other side of this, is getting housing that people can, can afford, and that also goes along with, with wages, better paying, better paying jobs, and I know people say, well, we've got jobs for $16 an hour, $17, $4 an hour that people aren't, aren't taking, but you know, even at $16 an hour with a large family, that makes it difficult to rent a place with, with the rents that are being, that are being charged. So I think you've got to promote the housing, you've got to promote the positive aspects. Kind of ties in to mention the thing on homeless, it's, you know, it's, it's not the police department's problem, it's a community, it's a community problem. And so, you know, what are we really, what are we really doing in terms of addressing that problem? Some say build a homeless shelter, build shelters they will come, even in other communities, but why, why are they homeless? Drug problem or mental health? Department does with mental health, work, work through that, but you may have people out there that don't have a job, they don't have a place to stay. Get some transitional housing possibly, where you could house those individuals and get them to work locally, and put any, any one time, Walmart says what, 70 some vacancies, and that's been true for, you know, for a number of years. And I think probably every community struggles with growth, particularly, particularly small communities, but, you know, I think Ottawa is not that far from into cities, not that far from more, and so it's, it's in driving distance, you may not have all of the things that you do in the metropolitan areas, you can, at least, well, you used to be able to do that, price of gas is, is going up, I mean, you still have that opportunity.
And if I may, I'll go on to the next one. Most of us in the room know kind of, you know, the answer to this question, but if you can for the public, just so they know, describe your experience with policy and budget development.
Well, I've worked with, this is what the commission is, it's a policy setting, setting function, it's not a, it doesn't run the city, that's why you have a city manager, so I've been involved with policy and budgets, city here, 47 years with ECN, certainly, policy and budget, and worked for two different, two different governors in policy and budget, so I'm familiar, familiar with that, and, you know, a lot of people think that you can be all things or all people, but you do have certain, certain experience.
Thank you, Richard.
Richard, you have vast experience that, and knowledge that you bring to our community and to, really even just to this chair today. If you, knowing everything that you know, if you could change one thing in Ottawa, what would it be? And then I have a follow-up question for that.
Oh.
Just one thing.
I would, one thing, well, I would say a more inclusive community, people working together and finding ways to come together as a community and make things, and make things happen.
So, saying that, I wonder if you could tell us about something that is happening in another community, another municipality, another town that you know of, that you would like to see happen here in Ottawa?
Well, now, having been directly involved, well, I would say Emporia is the last, the last city that I had a lot of involvement in, and that was, that was in the era of housing, they were going through the same thing, I think, that Ottawa was going, was going through. Guess I refer you to the, to the government journal, I can't remember any things there, but monthly they have, they have different things that are, that are going on, and I believe the last one they had, had a thing on youth. I can't think of the foundation. I don't know, but any, the foundation that they worked with on, on youth, and actually that foundation was Nan Moller's wife, I think, headed, headed that up, but it got out a lot of information on cities and states.
Richard, could you name one thing you think the city does well, and one thing you think the city does poorly?
One thing the city does well, store removal, that's for sure.
You'd prefer not to have any more of that the rest of the season?
That's up to them. They do that, they do that well. You get a long while, commission, I think you get a, you get a long while, and that's, I think unusual, a lot of commissions, there's a lot of infighting, and so I think this commission gets a long while to gather and probably gather part of that.
What's one thing you think the city does poorly?
Don't pat it tough on the back enough. As I said before, I think there's a lot of things that the city does, is that they don't let people know about it. And I know you always get, you always hear from the public when somebody's unhappy, you know, always have people calling you up and thanking, but I think sometimes, like I said before, you do a lot of things that people don't, don't see sometimes, you know, these are the things that we've done, we're being good stewards of your money.
Well, your experience with ECN and City Hall, and let's see if this question fits for your life, as a public official, sometimes requires a thick skin, it's not possible to please everybody all the time. How comfortable are you with public criticism? And if you make an unpopular decision, how will you respond to those citizens who disagree with your choice?
Well, you're going to make unpopular decisions, and I was on the commission, I'm certain I made unpopular decisions, I think, part of it is not to take it, not to take it personally, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, and, you know, at the end of the day, we have to do what, what is right, what do you think is in the best interest of the community, and I say, you know, at the end of the day, you have to look at yourself. And a lot of that is, is being supportive of the other commissioners, I can say during the years that I was on, that we, I mean, whatever went on here and left, we had disagreements at the, at the table when we left, that was, that was it. You succeed as a body and you fail as a body.
Richard, a lot of us, or us four are also involved in other activities and, and boards and things like that, and you've certainly been through this before, so you understand what, what I'm talking about, but can you, can you tell us five community activities or events that you're involved in, you know, or 10, 15, wherever, wherever you want to go? Why don't you start with five?
Well, Chamber and Franklin County Development, Optimist Club, worked very closely with Ottawa University, and especially the WE, the WE conference promoting inclusiveness, Martin Luther, Martin Luther King Program, cheers to those, a few who've not involved, as many as I used to be, who's retired, some of that went away, and that's not all, that's not all that, it gives me some time to do some other things, but.
Sure. Thank you.
Very involved in our community, thank you. And I know that you probably already know this and may remember this time when you were on the City Commission, that life as a public official often requires sacrifices of your privacy and of your time. Citizens contact you at home, at work, at the coffee shop, and when you're in line at grocery stores, if my children go to Walmart with me, at church while you're eating out. Tell me about how comfortable you are with the potential intrusion in your life.
That'd be a better question for my wife than me. That's never, that's not, never been an issue. You're in public life, you really don't have a lot, like you said, you have a whole different hours, different hours of the day and so forth, you're always, you're always courteous to respond to home, so that's, that is not a, it's not an issue.
What, if I could call you for a second? What question do you think, what question do you wish we would have asked you today?
I don't have any. Well, you could have asked, it would be the first thing I would do.
And what would you do?
I'd find out where you're at, get caught up through some reading, I know you're getting ready to start on the, on the, on the budgets, so that would be one area you have to get started.
I've got a follow-up question.
Richard, remember, while you were on the commission, were there any particular decisions that were difficult and can tell us about it, how you came to the process of the decision that maybe you hoped you made?
Long Greens. And that was difficult because we were dealing with housing at that, at that point in time, and having a shortage of housing, it didn't make sense to me to take out two decent, two decent housing there, and so that became an, an issue, and, you know, the more, the more I thought about it, and I remember calling the city manager, going over, he said, well, you're struggling with this. And I said, well, you know you are, and then I had a guy that worked for me, was in Planning, he may have been in Overland Park, I think at that time, was a planner, and so I, I called him and I said, you know, if you've got a surplus of houses, then you're probably in good shape, traffic flow, you don't know until you, until you've done all of those, all of those things, so it became a no to, to a yes.
I've got backup parking, not kidding, no.
Commissioner Skidmore, any other questions for Richard? Richard, I know we allotted 45 minutes, but we, I think we've, we've asked all the questions we feel are needed. Like Commissioner Kayla said, if you have anything else you'd like to say before, before we move on?
Just commend you for the job that you do, I know it's a tough, difficult job, you can't make anybody happy, and some will say you spend too much money, some say you don't spend enough, but you'd be thanked for your, your involvement, your commitment, and the things that you have to, you have to give up to serve this community, and obviously the involvement every year in the Martin Luther King Program, which more people would be involved in that, but the commission has led the way in that, in that regard, so you're , thanks for that, for all the things that you, that you do.
Richard, thank you for those kind words. We have two more interviews today, and then we have two next Monday, I believe, and then I'll, you know, we'll have a discussion afterwards and certainly get back to you with our decision.
Yeah.
We appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to say, is the, is he? Yeah, John's here, we'll go ahead and pull John in and interview him. He might do some fill-ins, he might do some fill-ins in between somebody who's not here. Text Zach and maybe come in.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on in and sit down. Welcome, John.
Yep.
We appreciate your willingness to put your name on the agenda today for an interview to fill Tom Wagon's position. We're going to start with, if you wanted to introduce yourself, and just kind of tell us a little bit about yourself, and anything you feel is important for us to know.
All right, I'm John Griffin, I grew up in Mona, Kansas, and then moved out in the country, close to avenues, when I was in high school. Went to Emporia State, got my degree in accounting, and that's where I met my wife, went to Ottawa, because I had a job in Lenexa then, and she was still going to school in Emporia, so Ottawa was halfway, and I was also close to home. So this is where we've been living for 16 years. I worked for Lenexa, I started working at COF Training Services, I worked there for about seven or eight years, and I got another job, in a way, so I was a similar company, and just six months ago, I came back to COF Training Services, so I'm the CFO there. And in 2017, maybe 18, I got managers in business administration from Emporia State, so I've, also I have my masters and, or COF initially, I was a CFO there, the next company, Good Life, I was a CFO when I came back as a CFO, so I have a lot of finance experience, I can read financial statements very well, I do all the budgeting for those companies, and I, we also have HUD properties, separate entities, but we still run the finances and run those properties too, so I'm very familiar with federal bureaucracy. I'm sorry.
Still want to tell about it, where do you go? John, thank you for being here. And can you describe how you currently perceive the city of Ottawa and the community of Ottawa?
I think it's a great place to live and raise a family, that's what I'm doing, there are good job, good job opportunities. There's high, there's high paying jobs, and entry level jobs also, there's really a lot of jobs, there's a lot of $15 an hour plus jobs, and. I don't know, it's, it's a great size, it's not too big, and if you want to go to a bigger city, we're just right in the middle of it, so you can just drive 45 minutes, and if there's something Ottawa doesn't have, you can get it pretty quickly.
John, what do you see as the current challenges facing the city of Ottawa?
I think there is a shortage of housing. So, I think housing, what was the question?
Challenges.
Challenges. Challenges, okay, well, housing is one, and there, there's also homelessness problems, which could be helped by some housing. I hate to say, get some more HUD housing in here, but it is good for the individual sort of living in HUD projects.
Okay, along with that, about opportunities, what, what do you see for the future of Ottawa? Take yourself 10, 15 years ahead, what opportunities do you see that we have here that we're not utilizing?
I mean, there's a lot of, ton of potential for some growth, taste growth, so that we don't grow too fast, that there's, we have room for businesses out by that, by the Love's Gas Station, that park out there, so there's a lot of opportunity for bigger employers to come in, and as long as we can meet the employer, those employer needs with housing for the employees, that's one opportunity there.
John, what talent or skill set can you bring to the City Commission?
I think my finance background can bring a lot to the city, I can read financial statements, I understand numbers and finances very well, and I can read and understand a lot of grant applications and how to, what we're told to do with the funds, make sure that it's all, that we're doing everything correctly, because those are very specific and have a lot of string. Because those are very specific and have a lot of strings attached, because I deal with that kind of stuff all the time. So have a good eye for seeing potential problems before we get into any problems. Thank you.
So John, life as a public official requires sacrifices of not only your privacy, but your time. Citizens will contact you at home, at school, at your children's school, at work. They're gonna contact you at the grocery store when you walk in, when you're getting gas in your car, at church and while you're eating out. And probably a myriad of other places I didn't even list there. Tell me about your comfort level with this intrusion into your professional, personal and family time.
I think I'd be fully fine with it. It's just, it's just part of the job. And I think my, I think about how it would affect my family. My wife would be great with it. My wife loves talking to people all the time. So I wouldn't have a problem with it. I think I'd handle those situations very well.
Kind of going along with that, with people contacting you all the time, sometimes these people aren't very happy. So how comfortable are you with public criticism? So if you make a unpopular decision, how would you respond to those citizens who disagree with your choice?
I guess it depends on the format and what's happening. Because if it's just a whatever, Facebook comment, I probably, I probably wouldn't let it bother me very much. I just feel like, well, again, it's part of the job. We're gonna have, you can't make everybody happy. And that's true all the time. So I think I, I can handle upset people pretty well. As a CFO on the top, I'm not trying to brag, I'm the top financial guy. So if there's a problem with invoicing or whatever, then that buck stops with me. So I have to handle this super upset people that have made it all the way to complaining to me about it. I can deal with that.
John, now you've been at COF how long?
I was there seven or eight years and now I've been back four, six, seven.
Okay, so you've been involved in the budgeting process and the policy setting. So tell us a little bit about your experience in that area.
When I first got there, the first time, we, I was on a policy committee. Reviewed a hundred percent of the policies and made a lot of, made a lot of changes, updated them. Because I don't know when the last time, probably been twenty years since they've been reviewed, I'd say. Well, that's sort of true. And overall, looking at all of them, it's been twenty years. Because one of the issues we found was that there'd be a problem, if it's employee problem or client problem, and they would make a new policy about it. A policy would be a punitive policy. So like, all the policies were, they weren't a bunch of specific negative policies that we wanted to take care of and say, well, that, I can't think of a specific example right now, but they were just specific and negative in nature. So we revamped the whole thing and rightfully going, it's a real lot of policies again currently. And budgeting, yes, I would make the budget every year and I'm about to start. This is what year, twenty twenty-two, and so I'll start budgeting next year soon.
John, if you could make one change in Ottawa, what would it be?
Change in Ottawa? I'm just gonna say, I would, I have a magic power, just free wifi across the whole city.
Want to address the speed of that wifi or?
Very fast, very fast, very fast.
Very fast today, may not be very fast today here, but okay.
Thank you.
Can you tell me about one thing that you think that the city does really well and one thing that the city does poorly? And then I have a follow-up question for you after that.
I think they do very well. I think we have great city police, law enforcement is great. Pretty low crime.
Something that the city does poorly? If you don't have something, let me just give you a second to think about that and I'm gonna give you another question.
Okay.
So tell me something you've seen in another community, another municipality, another city, another, you know, somewhere you've visited, somewhere you know of, that you'd like to see in the city of Ottawa?
What I really like is Emporia has that little free zoo. That would be great.
John, do you have anything that the city does poorly?
I'm gonna say, like, getting, building codes. When we're doing a rebonding or something, it always seems like a battle to get, get everything to code. I think, smooth that process out.
You had kind of mentioned what brought you here to Ottawa. What keeps you there?
Well, vacation is great. I like the size of the city. I don't have to, I don't have to commute to work. That's one of the reasons why I came back. I have, so, because my job opportunity is here and I like, my kids go to school, they can walk to school. It's amazing.
John, tell us a little bit about your personal life. What do you like to do in your spare time? Any activities or things you attend in town? Just tell us a little bit about your weekends.
Well, I have a little fishing ski boat, so we like to go to one lake, take Zan out. I like to play video games. And Blake is nine, already turned ten. He's one of those ages. Anyway, he's getting old enough where he can actually play and it's, so we can play together now. So I like that a lot.
Your wife's gonna remind you of the exact age you get to come to stuff like. Goes back to that intrusion thing.
Somebody comes up in the grocery store, you don't know your son's age.
May happen.
It's good.
What question do you think we should have asked you? What question do you wish we would have asked you?
I don't know. What should we ask? I don't know. This is weird. If you would have asked me, like, why, why, what's, you have an axe to grind, like, why would you want to become a city commissioner? Do you want to make some change or something? And I guess the answer is no, I don't, I don't want to make some big, like, change and I don't have any problems. What's anything? I just wanna serve, serve the city, make it a better city, so that my kids, grandkids probably can live and work here.
Commissioners, any other questions for John? John, we've already had one interview. We've got one more after you and then we have two more next Monday. After that, the commission will kind of get together and have a discussion and see, you know, where we feel where we want to move forward. After that, we'll have somebody contact you on, you know, our decision. So I'm assuming, I don't even know if we'll have the discussion next Monday, but we'll get in contact with you as soon as we do make that decision.
All right. All right. Do I ask questions?
You want to go ahead.
Go right ahead.
It's your interview.
What?
It doesn't pay squat.
What, what are you guys looking for in a city commissioner? What's a perfect commissioner here? What do you wish?
Well, I think a perfect commissioner is a mixture of all of the four that we have here. I think we each kind of bring a little bit of information, a little tidbit of each individual life that as a group, we can make a great decision together. I think that you being another spoke in the wheel to keep this ball rolling, this wheel rolling, is, is what we're looking for, in my mind. I'm not sure what the other commissioners think, but that's my opinion.
Even though we've had a collective conversation about it, we really have not had a collective conversation. So I'm assuming that we all kind of have different ideas of what we're looking for, for someone who would sit aside us. But I'm certainly looking for somebody who is open-minded and willing to explore, maybe just challenge the boundaries a little bit. I mean, move, it's okay to be comfortable where we're at. I'm not comfortable where we're at. I want us to try just a little bit better and to try and push our boundaries just a little bit if we can. I can't imagine that nobody here, you know, we, we all love the community. We're all here for the same exact reason. You're absolutely right, to be a servant of the, of the, of the community and to leave the community a better place. But, yeah, having somebody who, you don't have to agree with everything that happens around this table, but we can agree, we can be respectful and disagree.
And I agree. I don't think there's a mold of anything, any perfect commissioner, but just someone who's willing to bring their ideas and thoughts and be respectful and, and really just love the community as much as all of us do, willing to put in the work for it.
And it does pay a hundred and fifty a month. About like minimum wage, twenty, we figure one.
Four cents an hour now.
But I appreciate your numbers, experience and education. As you know, we lost Commissioner Jorgensen last year. And he's kind of good to have a person that knows numbers. We've got a fifty million dollar budget to look at every year. The taxpayers, our employees are looking at us to pass the most efficient budget we can. And we have the fiduciary responsibility to spend the money appropriately as we should. Every year, we've got that weight on our shoulders to consider. We don't do a good job with fires. And they have that right to do that, of course, every election. But, yeah, I appreciate your ability to look at numbers and financial statements and see what the numbers are, how they read. And maybe spend a lot of time on that. So it's a good talent to have, what I'm saying.
I'll add also that COF's a nine million dollar budget a year. And then plus the HUD projects, which is less than a million. When I said Good Life, it's about a twenty-four, twenty-five million dollar budget.
And John, just to be clear, we did not lose Commissioner Jorgensen. He just moved out of town. I don't want anybody getting on social media asking, giving Blake's wife condolences or anything like that. All right, John. Thank you. We appreciate your time today. Like I said, we'll get with you when we've made a decision. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you. I thought he was gonna do a song and dance.
Snoop Dogg's coming out.
All right, Zach, that was your first, first test.
That was?
You were, you were scheduled for five thirty. Wanted to see if you were actually show up beforehand.
I was. I was ready. And I obeyed all traffic laws on the way out.
I'll tell you what, that's two people in a row that are just trying to get out of tickets. All right, Zach, thanks. Thanks for showing up today. We appreciate your willingness to put your name on the agenda for the interview, for to fill Tom Wagon's position. Let's start, just if you want to state your name and then tell us a little bit about yourself and anything else you think would be important for us to know.
Yeah, for sure. So for those of you I don't know personally, I guess, Zachary Clayton. Born and raised here in Ottawa, father of a teacher, or not the father of a teacher, obviously, son of a teacher in the community, not at Ottawa, but he taught at West Franklin, Pomona, Williamsburg and Central Heights for thirty-five years. And his mother's worked in this building for twenty-five years, probably. So kind of son of people who are community minded as well. Was born at Ransom here and still see Bud every chance I get. And so kind of been just a pillar of Ottawa. Ottawa's been a pillar of my life, I guess. Left and went to K-State, economy in oh-seven, oh-eight, I'm sure most of you are aware. Took a slight decline, so changed my life's trajectory. Came back to town and bought a house in two thousand and eleven. I've lived here since then. And worked for OU, Franklin County, and now currently own some businesses here in town flipping houses. And that's really what's kind of led me to run and pursue this opportunity is, I love improving Ottawa one house at a time. But I think a position on the commission is the best way to impart true change over time. And so I feel like I am a very reasonable person. I try to be thoughtful, open-minded. I feel like personally in my life, I've made some pretty great decisions and hope that I can kind of translate that into, you know, some leadership for the community.
Well, Zach, we're gonna try and forget that you went to K-State, at least a few of us are. Others will highlight there.
I love it.
Yeah. He doesn't have more questions. Describe how you currently perceive the community of Ottawa.
First and foremost, I love Ottawa. I previously worked at Cerner in Kansas City, the city, and everyone laughs when I call it that. But I always sold Ottawa to everyone up there and they're like, why don't you just move to Kansas City? I love the community of Ottawa. I love the feel of Ottawa. Obviously, property is a lot cheaper down here than it is in Kansas City, which is a good draw. And I think Ottawa is just a perfect size that we feel small town, where I go to the Price Chopper, I go to Starbucks, I bump into three people that I know. But we're also a large enough town that we have amenities available to people and are just outside of Kansas City for being a bedroom community, for anyone who would like to commute or work outside of the community for other opportunities. It kind of obviously drew me back after college, because I worked in Kansas City and it was a quick, easy commute. Which has been where I've decided to continue my life, just kind of for the opportunities available here and, and seeing the town kind of, you know, slowly grow and change over the last twenty years.
Zach, what do you see as the current challenges facing the city of Ottawa?
I'm sure, as you guys obviously see, there's, there's many, face everywhere. Budget is obviously a huge issue. Anywhere you Budget is obviously a huge issue anywhere you go. That's something you guys are keenly aware of. Housing, as I'm sure everyone who comes in here to interview for this position and everyone in here will attest, we're trying to bring workforce for if we get a tenant at Proximity Park. And I see on Ottawa Kansas News all the time, people looking for rentals, people looking for houses to buy. And we just don't have enough to fill the need currently. Another one for me, working in information technology for years. I worked from home for two years during COVID. I was blessed to have terrific service from Vive the entire time. No complaints, no issues. But I know that internet access is tough in Ottawa. You know, between AT&amp;T and Vive, there's not many other options. And, you know, potentially looking at expanding that if possible. If we can either incentivize other opportunities to come to Ottawa, or I know the city currently has an ISP for the school district and I think the industrial park and some other places. And internet to me has really become a utility over the past 20 years. Where it used to be a luxury and now it's, you know, the students were working from home and it seems to be such a part of our lives that I think some competitive stuff there would be great. I believe the community development projects such as the Neighborhood Revitalization Program are terrific things to help improve our community. And I think those are some really great opportunities to get that information out there and let people know. I think the city's been doing a great job on getting information to people. I think they've greatly improved in the last five years, in my opinion. I know I enjoyed the pamphlet I got about the surcharge from the storm in 2021. And that was great because I, you know, there's so many people that have questions on their utility bill. And I think those little things for information to people who aren't available, maybe watch these meetings. I don't know they can find minutes online or anything like that. It's very beneficial to your average citizen who can give that information. I think those have been some great strides kind of the past few years.
Okay, Zach, let's talk about opportunities here in Ottawa. If you look into the future, the next five, 10 or 15 years, what are some opportunities you see that we need to capitalize on?
I obviously think our just physical location is a huge one. Obviously, we're on I-35 and 68 and 59 where I think we're in a perfect location to draw people from Lawrence to Pega, Emporia, Kansas City to Ottawa who could live here and potentially work out of town. People who maybe want to get out of Johnson County or get to smaller school districts. I believe the Performing Arts Center and a lot of the changes at the high school and the new Sunflower are great things for the community. I can imagine if I was, you know, a family driving through Ottawa, potentially looking to live here, seeing those schools and seeing, you know, the turf football field, those type of things that we show that we invest in the children and the future of this community, to me, would speak volumes. I definitely think an opportunity to keep expanding out that as well as some opportunities, I would think, in utilities. I'm sure we're all aware and you guys obviously have to deal with that firsthand. Utilities are expensive, not just to the people paying them, but for us to produce them. And finding potentially a compromise, but some way that we can mitigate those costs that we're trying to pass on to the residents as much as possible. And when we can't, communicating as best we can why things need to increase and how they're increasing. Obviously, right now, it's a difficult time with inflation. And, you know, obviously, a lot of people probably financially are seeing those effects firsthand. And at some point, we don't have a lot of options. Our hands are tied. I think letting people know that our hands are tied and what we're doing the best we possibly can with that.
So Zach, what talent or skill set could you bring to the city commission?
I will say showing up on time when I get a text message would be a good one. But no, I, I believe my history working in information technology could be a valuable asset. Obviously, as these meetings are, you know, our live V is Zoom. So many things, technology has changed the world so much. And having experience in that and some of the challenges there, simply a troubleshooting mindset to me has translated over to my career as a general contractor. That many times you're faced with an issue and there are several outcomes similar to a computer problem. And it's working to find whatever issue works the best, whatever solution can fix that and maybe is less problematic for people. And it may not be the solution you would like it to be, but I think it's the best one for that opportunity. And I think that that mindset, kind of troubleshooting and working through problems, will be very beneficial in the future.
All right, Zach, so I think I may not know how you're going to answer this, but we'll see. Like life as a public official, it certainly requires sacrifices of not only your privacy, but your own personal time. Citizens are going to contact you at home, at work, at the gas station, while you're at the grocery store, while you're at church, while you're eating out, pretty much anywhere. They're going to contact you. Tell me about your comfort level with that intrusion into your life.
Yeah, that is obviously a very realistic expectation, as I'm sure you all have experienced. I try to be a very open person socially anyway, in terms of communicating and talking with anyone anywhere I go. If that's people I know, friends of friends or anyone like that. I also know that I would need to prepare myself, obviously, for that. There's a vote that I maybe vote a way that may not be popular with people. I have to have that understanding that I may have people approach me with their position and their thoughts on the issue. And I know that in that I've found that you can't give people a solution. You just have to listen to them. And, you know, basically being available to those people to hear their concerns, obviously on the spot. And maybe even I'll never be able to, you know, complete whatever their concern is. But at least giving them the time to show that they're valued member of the community, you value their input, even if I may disagree.
Could you describe your experience with policy and budget development?
Very limited. Budget development would be more tied to running a business, personal finances, obviously, in terms of that and adjusting, obviously, currently with rising costs of construction materials and adjusting accordingly to that and being fluid. In terms of obviously a city budget, I've never had experience working through any of that. When I was at OU in the county, had limited involvement in working with like departmental budgets and recommending items for that in different projects and stuff. But very limited on the scale of obviously policy for something like the city or a budget that large. But I'm very excited to have an opportunity to learn a lot of that. Obviously, you guys are very first at that, so.
From learning, I think a lot of people don't have experience with budgets that large. I wish we all did.
Let me think here. Question here, maybe. If you could change one thing here in Ottawa, what do you think? Maybe it's hard to come up with one, but if you could come up with one.
If I could change one thing? I hate to say utility costs because that's rather self-serving for my payments every month. If I could change one thing, I would probably change, I think sidewalks. And obviously, that's not a change, but I think it would be a growth area or something. I would try to make more of a priority, I mean, maybe a priority, but a higher priority in the budget when applicable. I obviously know the concrete's expensive and sidewalks are not cheap. But I feel as a town, sidewalks provide safety. People are walking on the sidewalk instead of streets. I drive down, you know, Willow a lot as school's letting out and there's just not sidewalks for the students to walk on, so they walk in the curb. And thankfully, I don't believe there's been many issues in terms of that. But I believe as a city, our trails and sidewalks are very important to not only keep public safe, it keeps the roads clear. And I think for people who are just wanting to get out and be active, it provides a safe way to do that.
Zach, as Commissioner Kayler mentioned earlier, you know, you're going to run into, if you were to fill this position, you're going to certainly run into individuals, whether, you know, out and about that where unfortunately, it may not be as cordial as you would, you know, like them to be. And that requires, you know, us to have thick skin. How comfortable are you with public criticism, first of all? And then when you, when you encounter that criticism, how do you think you would respond?
As my personality, I would more than likely not respond. I typically don't engage much in, much conflict in my life at all, honestly. So it would be a lot of just listening to people and letting them say their piece. And, you know, I understand that their frustration is directed at me, but obviously isn't with me. It's either with the decision that was made or the issue that was there before I, we as a commission made a decision. I think it's just understanding that people, you know, obviously maybe come at you in a way that they don't intend to as well. They just feel very strongly. And sometimes when we feel so strongly about something, we almost lose ourselves. And so, you know, that or if Ottawa Kansas News has a post regarding the way I voted on something, I think that's a good room for, an opportunity for growth. You know, I can see things from other people's vantage points. Their message may not be delivered in a way that, you know, I'm super excited to hear. But I think it's a realistic expectation to know that people will disagree. And hearing them disagree can give me a perspective I mean, I've not have had before. And kind of as Commissioner Kayler mentioned, you, someone comes up to you at dinner. I think letting them speak their piece, but also reminding them that I'm at dinner with people. And, you know, at some point, they are free to come here and speak a public comment or we can, you know, they can email me or anything like that. There may be a more appropriate venue for that.
Thank you.
So tell me about one thing that you think that the city of Ottawa does really well. Knock it out of the park. And one thing we just don't.
Don't? One thing that the city, I think, does really well, I mentioned earlier, is communication. I know I really appreciated when the snowstorms were rolling in a few weeks ago. On Facebook, there was a map that was up that showed which streets, you know, were the highest priority, which in, you know, which are the tow-in zones and where you could expect to see plows out early. And you kind of understood when they would finally get to your neighborhood. I know anytime there's stuff like that, we see people asking that question. And then obviously, the little pamphlet that came out about the surcharge and any of that stuff, I believe the city's done a great job in the past few years. And it may just be that I've become much more cognizant and I pay more attention at getting information out to the people and being open about a lot of those things. So I think their communication is definitely a very strong aspect. An issue currently would be, I would have to go back to a room for growth in utilities. And obviously, there may not be a solution to that. And it's obviously a challenge and a struggle. And I know for a lot of people that, you know, close to 20% over two years is, is tough to absorb. It's obviously tough for the city to absorb that as well. But I, being a, you know, payer of those utilities, obviously feel the brunt of that as well. So I understand where people have issue with rising utility costs and those. And I believe that is something to, to investigate and look at for the future. I know Ottawa offers, they did, I'm not sure if it's still in place, the 100% net metering for individuals who get solar panels on their houses. And I've wanted to do that for years. It's just a lot of upfront capital. And little things like that, I think, could maybe potentially, over a decade or 20 years, help mitigate some of those rising costs.
So as a follow-up, can you tell me about something that you've seen in another community, another municipality, somewhere else, something happening across the nation that you think that would be great for the city of Ottawa or you'd like to bring to the city of Ottawa?
I believe we are obviously a different community. But I, one, love Mass Street. And I love how it feels like a thriving downtown. Our downtown has obviously over the past 20 years ebbed and flowed in terms of storefronts that are, aren't full of issues there. And I think we're on a great path. I know personally, I would sit at pizza time and sit outside. And I believe the downtown area in terms of that, it would inconvenience me to have to drive down Cedar if, you know, Main Street ever became one lane. But I believe the benefit to all those businesses down there to the consumers and all those people, that would be something I would just love to see in time, as if downtown could kind of have more of a feel of that.
Okay, so you kind of talked about what brought you here to Ottawa. What would you say keeps you here?
I think the feel of the community. Kind of as I mentioned before, knowing every single person who lives on my block. You know, knowing their kids who are off at college now and asking how they're doing. Walking my dogs on 17th Street and people waving, saying hi. When my dogs get out and are on 17th Street, someone calls me and they're like, hey, your dogs are out. You know, those small benefits that you get in a town this size, I think is just terrific. I also love when I commuted to Kansas City. The proximity is so easy to commute to several different towns. And for me, that's really just kept me here. Obviously, having family in town has played a role in that as well. But I just have a firm belief that Ottawa, if I ever to, if I were to ever have children, would be somewhere I would want to raise children. And I try to keep that mindset, you know, when, when I personally am voting on increases to my taxes for this, the Performing Arts Center and things like that. I try to be cognizant of that in the community, believe it's a great place to raise a family. It's a great place to be a young professional. And I just try to draw as many people to town as I can.
What about your spare time on weekends? What kind of visibility are you out in the community? Any activities that you attend or go to? Or just tell us a little bit about your spare time. What do you do?
I'm active now with sponsoring events, sometimes for, for COF, COF Golf Tournament. And we had a cornhole tournament a few weeks ago. I know I saw a few people at, I went to the Police Foundation trivia a few Friday nights ago and try to do those events or trivia down at Not Lost when things are going on. I know I saw Commissioner Kayler last year at the airplane pool at the airport and try to be involved in a lot of those events. Being a dog person, I've been a donor and involved with Prairie Paws for several years and lucky enough to drive when I see the van, I see my dogs on the side of the van. And so that's always kind of, kind of nice. And, you know, tend shows at OMA whenever possible. And I enjoyed a couple of years ago, they had some outdoor concerts that were great. Do those type of events. And I know I've definitely spent a lot of money at the bowling alley since we got one back in town. It was a great activity during COVID to get out and do and play in some rec leagues for volleyball at the South Beach Cove. And I play at the ORC for indoor and try to be active in those type of things. Attend some OU basketball and volleyball games to see friends play. And I'm an OU basketball donor. Try to be involved with those type of things as well.
Speaking of basketball, you know, the women's K State, she's in the Sweet 16. Have you heard how they did today?
I have not heard. I was busy.
Are the boys doing? I just want to make sure.
We're just trying to get Weber back. But KU's doing great, so.
Meandering. Meandering.
Oh, it doesn't work. I am a born and raised KU fan because my mom attended KU med school. And so I broke her heart when I went to K-State. But I went for agriculture and it was either that or leaving Kansas. It's the lesser of two evils for her.
We're glad you're here.
Well, I'm going to defer to Commissioner Kayler because she always asks the question so much better than I do about all the additional stuff.
What? Zach, tell us about something that we should be asking you. What, what thing you wish that we would ask you?
Trying to think of something that would be great for you to ask me. Trying to think of something that would be great for you to ask me. I think you guys have covered obviously a lot of great things with your questions in terms of those kinds of needs. And obviously, I'm sure you probably can't ask many questions on how I would have voted on past issues. But that would be something that I would almost think, in my position, may not be good for me or may be really great for me, would be to almost have, you know, a list of past votes that you guys have made and where I would have fallen on those. So it's obviously for the community at large, that might be a better option than you guys because I may have disagreed with you personally. But I think that would be kind of a thing that I would enjoy seeing, where I would kind of fall in line with some of the decisions that have been made historically.
All right, Zach, we appreciate your time. Thanks for coming in today. We've had, you're now our third interview today. We have two more next Monday. After that, we'll have a discussion on how we'd like to move forward. Certainly, we'll get ahold of you once we've made that decision and we'll see how that goes. Thank you once again for coming in. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up early.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm not sure what Mike was going to say for 30 minutes.
Just one more thing. I just let the K-State men are in the Elite Eight in livestock judging. It's called Meat Madness.
I don't think KU's in the Elite Eight.
You've got to be proud of something. All right, Zach, once again.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Oh, it's come down. All right, that'll move us on to a brief overview of the 2023 budget process. Melanie, how are you?
Before we put her on the timer, she said three.
What do you consider great?
Well, we give public comments three minutes, so.
I can do that in two minutes and 47 seconds.
Or no to less.
Okay, so it really is just a brief overview. Just wanted to get you into the loop on where we're starting in the budget process and then also what our plan is and how we'll plan to bring to you budget items. Paul, if you could advance to the next slide. This is just a reminder, mostly for our public. But I did a budget review with the leadership class a while back. And these were some of the key points, I think, that when we're developing a budget, these are the things that we're considering. And it's important, I think, as a reminder as to what we're using to be able to come up with that budget that we're bringing to you and that's ultimately going to impact the public. So we're looking at all the plans we have in place and we're probably developing new plans as we go, updating those plans, updating those forecasts. We're looking at all the services that we're trying to provide to the community. Obviously, we're trying to stay within those, not trying, we are staying within those regulations or trying to come up with the best way to make sure we are in compliance with those regulations. And of course, we're looking at all the revenue sources, which include property taxes and ultimately impacting our citizenry with the mill levy that we assign to that budget. Next slide, please. So to start with the regulations, last year was our first year that we put in place the revenue neutral rate. Prior to that, we were using a CPI to calculate our maximum annual increase. There were a few exclusions in there. It was a complicated calculation. The new revenue neutral rate process, it does assign a rate to last year's, it's last year's budgeted tax dollars against your new year's property valuation. And it assigns a rate. And the idea being that we're being completely transparent with our public about, if we were using this year's dollars against last year's budget request or the property tax dollars that we needed, what would that mill rate look like? And so the couple of dates that are assigned to that is June 15th is when we get our assessed valuation and that revenue neutral rate from them. July 20th is when we have to have made a decision as to whether or not we're going to exceed that revenue neutral rate. Now, this isn't your final decision, but it does drive the process. And it really drives that calendar that we've put together for you. So that is the point, that you'll establish the maximum amount that you eventually will consider for your budget overall and your mill rate. And also, it determines whether or not you are planning to or might exceed that revenue neutral rate that's provided from the counties. Next slide, please. So these are just a couple of highlighted process changes. Internally, we've started the budget process already. In fact, all of your departments have pulled together their draft requests. We've worked on our line item budgets. We are meeting this week with department heads and finance. And next week, department heads and your city manager are going to be meeting. And then we will be bringing some of those requests all back to you in the month of May. The things that we've changed in the process are a little bit different. We've added some forms for them to fill out. So personnel additions, vehicles and equipment requests, capital costs. Those are going to come to you on a form, a form-style format so that they're very consistent in the way that you're viewing each of those. So it's easy for you to, not necessarily have to go pick parts and pieces out of just a memo, but you can look at the full request. And they've answered specific questions in those request forms. And then also, we tried to minimalize the amount of hours that we spend on budget presentations, really more focusing on getting you the information that we think you need about the services that we're trying to budget dollars to be able to fund. And so part of what we've asked the department heads to do is when they put together those memos for you, that were not necessarily focused on the $50 and the $200 line item changes, but more importantly focused on what is it going to take to move us in the direction of getting us, you know, this year, two years, five years down the road and improving those services that we're all trying to support for the public. Next slide, please. So this is just an overview of May. And that will be our, kind of our crunch month, where we do have four work sessions that we're going to bring, or all four study sessions, we're planning to bring you budget information. But remember, they'll be in more of a summary fashion. So I don't believe we're going to need the two full hours each week. And that's why we were okay with putting four study sessions in there. And keep in mind that you'll have all the detail ahead of time. Mostly, everything should be prepared before the beginning of May. So you should have a lot of that budget information ahead to be looking through so that if you've got specific questions, whether it's line item related or whether it's specific new requests related, you can ask those. And then next slide, please. Our last couple of months of our budget process is really going to be meeting that July 20th deadline to be able to let the county know if you're intending to exceed the revenue neutral rate. In order to do that, we backed up two study sessions before that. Remember, July, or June 15th is when we get the valuation from the county. So we'll have just gotten that information. So we'll be able to prepare that for you for those two meetings. And then we will have everything for you so that we can then also publish the notice and then hopefully hold a public hearing on the adoption of the budget and/or exceeding that revenue neutral rate on August 3rd. So we don't have to actually certify the budget until October 1st. But there's really no reason to wait at this point, since you will have already established that maximum. So obviously, we've worked in some time lapses in there. So if we do need to extend some, we need to move some things around, we can do that. It's not a problem. You'll hear from all of your internal departments. You'll hear from your community partner agencies. And so that is basically all I have for you. If you have questions, we're happy to answer.
Can I mention there's any questions? We have Lambis.
I appreciate you having some efficiency presented. I think that's a good idea, too. I think we would kind of have those long endless nightmares. And sometimes we're talking about small dollar amounts that really have such an insignificant effect on the total budget, not to be ignored, but to not spend time on, like I said, $200 items. So I appreciate your idea of the efficiency. Forward to that.
I think that's it.
Did anyone time me?
Yeah, you were way over.
We're going to cut your budget.
Thank you. All right, move us on to comments by the city manager.
All right, so first thing is commissioners, Mike Hall is here today. He assures me he's coming back tomorrow. So Mike is our, for the public that doesn't know, Mike is our new community development director. So he's settling in. And we, I mean, what I mean we, I mean, the lawyers are still working on the Markley agreement. My goal is to hopefully get this done this week, get it to you next Monday. And I know that that's what the city attorney's goal is also. That's it.
All right. Michael, welcome again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moves on and comments by the city commissioners, Commissioner Kayler.
Commissioners, I just want to brief you quickly on some testimony that I gave to the Kansas Legislature, to the House Tax Committee last Thursday regarding opposition to HB 2738. I truly don't anticipate that it's going to go very far, but you never know, ever say never. This legislation is very similar to Senate Bill 87. And it would address the comp use tax and the compensating use tax that we receive here in the city. Remember that 83% of the population in the state of Kansas lives within cities. 90% of the sales tax that is generated within the state of Kansas is done within cities. This bill, or Senate Bill 87, if either one were to pass, would take the cost sharing away from us. And that would not happen. And that would mean an increase if we were to take our budget from last year, an increase of 15 mils to just replace what we would lose. So I quickly thank you to Melanie. Thank you 100 times to Melanie for, I think, within like a 90-minute period, we drafted some really quick stuff and sent it up to tax. And we were the only city who actually gave testimony last Thursday. There were others, but we were the only city. So just know, if you'd like that letter that I sent up, I'm sure that the city manager can send that out to you. But know that things happen really quickly. And I'm sure that none of us want to increase our budget by 15 mils next year just to replace revenue that would be lost.
Do you know what city mills are right now? Do you know how much they're?
I know that it would be almost a 25% increase.
That's where I was getting.
Yeah, it's like.
So what you're saying, if that bill passes, our taxes city-wise go up 25%?
Yeah, it's pretty devastating to us and to every municipality in the state of Kansas.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Commissioner Graves.
I had an Ottawa Municipal Auditorium board meeting on Tuesday that I attended and somehow volunteered myself to redo their flooring in one of the rooms. So that'll be fun. We'll do that Friday. That's about it. I guess a week from Friday, maybe.
It was a weak moment, too, for you.
It was, yeah. I was like, wow.
I just have the people who are getting their notices in the mail with their regard to the county appraisal for their homes and properties.
I did.
And you've probably noticed increases in that settlement. But I just want to alert everybody, everybody says, oh, their taxes are going up. And this is before you spoke, so I'm thinking, okay, they're not going up necessarily. It's all based on the mill levy. So I just want to remind everybody, just because your house valuation went up 12% or 10%, doesn't mean taxing went up that high necessarily because we set the mill levy accordingly. I just want to alert everybody, be careful what you say. That's not necessarily the truth.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I had a meeting last week with FCDC, with a great speaker, Chris Gutierrez, who is a, he facilitates FCDC with possible prospects for proximity park. There's been a lot of prospects and certainly more to come. He had a lot of great information. So it was interesting to hear how excited they are about the Apex bill and if they do it, if Eastern Kansas does land that possible entity, that how it would trickle down to our community, which would be wonderful. Help with some of the growth that some of the interviewers were concerned about. And then my other comment is, Dennis, do you have anything that you want to say?
Related to?
No? It's fine.
Yeah. Cemetery.
I didn't want to put you on the spot, so I figured he would.
I don't know that, there again, we talked about this earlier. I don't know at this point in time that we have a lot to offer that hasn't been put out there. I think what we talked about is that we want to make sure that everybody understands that we are moving forward with some changes that will happen in the cemetery. What was done last week, we have all agreed, is not consistent with what the regulations were to be interpreted. And so for those, that public out there that is still asking the question of, you know, why did my stuff get removed? What we can tell them is we can't fix the past. You know, what happened, happened with the belief that it was, that the interpretation that they were following was correct. And that with some of the feedback from the community and some of the things that we've looked at in the regulations, we are going to make some changes. We're going to make some changes. So be patient with us. When we make these changes, we're going to make sure that everybody understands and they're right this time. And we will move forward in a bit of a different manner.
Thank you, Dennis. And the only thing that I've heard is, you know, just they were concerned on how they move forward. You know, who can answer some of the questions that they had? Who would you like them to contact if they had any questions concerning that?
Me.
Okay. Here at City Hall.
They can, I'm not hard to find.
Sure.
I am not hard to find. And the other thing that I would say is, you know, there again, we've had a lot of those concerns. But I have also had some great conversations with the community. The people that have reached out have been very understanding and are really just concerned that we are going to do something to change what took place. And like I said, we are, we are working on that as we move forward here.
Thank you, Dennis. I don't have any other comments, so I'll move on to the announcements. We have our joint meeting Wednesday, the 23rd at noon. I believe that's at the Annex. Study session, the 28th at 4:00. We have our Chamber Awards Celebration at 5:45 PM at the Ottawa University, the 31st. And then we have a study session, the 4th of April, on a regular meeting at 7 PM, the 6th of April. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest, if it's all right with the other commissioners, that on our next interview, maybe we just need 30 minutes on each instead of 45.
I think that's better.
And then move one at 4:30. So we'll see how patient the second one is.
Anything else, commissioners? Now we all are turning. Thank you.